It's normal.
It's true.
Okay, I will call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, July 26, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brian Hansen. Jason Sampson.
Yeah.
Dave Nielsen.
Yeah.
Sandy Eric.
Yeah.
Here.
Barb Mittman.
Here.
Hey, first, and Brian did notify us he is out of state. Can we get an approval of the agenda?
Will be approved.
Second. Okay, Jason and Barb, any discussion? Seeing council, please vote. Hey, agenda is approved, takes us to the consent agenda, and it may be removed for separate consideration.
Will you approve?
Second.
And Sandy, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us into the public forum, which is time set aside for topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, you know, action may be taken first. We have a swearing in of a new police officer, which is always something exciting, so we'll have our public safety director come up and introduce our new officer.
Good evening. So nice to have a swearing in ceremony, just gotta have a couple of more and we'll be all right. I had Madison write this up for me, so I wouldn't say anything to embarrass her, so what you're gonna hear is from her, so. Madison grew up in Bondurant as the youngest of four kids in the Dix family. She was homeschooled all the way through high school and obtained her EMT certification right after completing high school. Madison has that experience as a volunteer firefighter and EMT with the Bondurant Emergency Services. This is where she met Ray and Ray convinced her to apply, so. Now, she has had a passion and desire to help people when they're in times of need. Madison loves to travel and learn about new places and cultures and hopes to learn to become fluent in Spanish. Me too. She spends her free time with her dog, Rob, enjoying nature and playing music on a quiet evening at home. Madison is extremely excited to be starting a new chapter in her life for the Nevada Police Department and hopes to become the best police officer she can be. And I'm sure she will be, a lot of hard work ahead of her, so, a lot of training and a lot of hard work. So, I will say that Madison is probably one of the most. One of our candidates that has tried the hardest to get in our police department. You know, the physical agility test she didn't have any problems with, some of the other stuff were a little challenging, but she just kept at it and we hung in there with her and she finally was able to overcome those things that she needed to. So, I think she's gonna be a great addition. Like I said, she got a lot of training ahead of her, but I think she'll be just fine, so. Welcome aboard.
Let's meet you right up here at the front. Marla's isn't here, so. I'm coming to get a picture. Hey, now we just had that part of the public forum, is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? We will close the public forum, moving to old business, there's old business A approved, phase 2021 work order number three for HR green scope of services for JAS services and training in a moment to exceed $9,400.
Will be approved.
Second. Hey, Jason and Darren, any discussion?
We're gonna do a voice.
I'm seeing no discussion, so we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Sampson.
Hi.
Nielsen.
Hi.
Vance.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Mittman.
Hi.
Hey, that is approved, takes us to new business, there's new business A discussion and appropriate follow-up for proposed parking on J and K Avenue between First and Second Streets.
Move to approve.
Pardon?
Hey.
Let me just look at. Heck, here.
Barb making a motion, Jake making, Jason making a second. I don't know, did we have an option we were making a motion on, or what was the?
As presented, I took that as yes, there's going to be parking or no, there is.
It's gonna be just a discussion and then.
Okay.
You guys can make a decide on what you want to do about it.
Okay. So, I know there was a request removed, so maybe Rob will lay out what he's looking for and then we'll be clear on what motion we're making.
Sure. Yeah, this was brought to me by Karen Teal, who I believe is here tonight. Couple of months ago, back in May, about asking about the no parking on one half of the street. Okay, between First and Second to be removed, just to open up the area for parking, it's the Omen Block. On J between First and Fifth, I believe, that has no parking at all. So, it seems it's entirely residential area, it seems pretty reasonable to remove it, I know there was some discussion from the DOT, or information from the DOT about. Access off and on S14, and that's why there's no parking there currently. But looking at, I took a drive through town on S14. And there is no parking on half of the road on, or part of the road on E, I, Lincoln. And N going to the east. Uh, no, no parking on N going to the west or M. Which are both residential streets. And J and K kind of fit more of a residential than a main thoroughfare like E, I, Lincoln. And N, so it seems like it would be logical to remove the parking. And as I told everybody, I went and knocked on a bunch of doors in the neighborhood and talked to almost somebody from almost all the houses around there. Majority would like to have the no parking removed. Not everybody, but most people.
Next, the only question I had was whether we needed some space. Um, S14. Or emergency equipment. Just because that would be a thoroughfare that they would use fire trucks. And so, do they need a little more space encumbered, like a here to corner, like is out by the middle school? You know, no parking, so. Is there some guidance for that?
Well, in the past. We can hire the agents to be down there. He's during the tenure that I spent here. We've had issues with parking. Outside area. One point. Five days postal parking signs. Outside of street all the way down. And there are more situations, other times we don't have. Murders issue. That the entrances. It's very challenging. Areas that were in the dark were certainly dark, which were east.
So, we said another than a special event or busy, would be okay to have parking?
Well, I'm not saying, I'm just saying what happens when we have a large event that's not.
Okay.
But J, J and K are almost, you know, that's closer to Lincoln Way than the fairgrounds.
Hey, they're there in the parade or something, is what he said.
Right, right, no, I understand that, yeah.
Right now, is it prohibited on both north and south? Is it just one side?
Just one side.
They can park on one side but not the other?
The rest of blocks on east are both side parking.
I'll also add. First time ever I had any discussion about any issues with parking.
Well, we'll knock this up anyways, was this the mowing instance, the mowing where they? They wanted to mow and they didn't want to get grass on someone else's car?
Answer that since she's the.
We had to live on the south side of that block where parking is allowed. And like right now, I took a picture of the right hand, there's three cars from the car or the house that's straight across from ours, three of their cars were parked right in front of our house. And then there's another truck that I don't think has moved in a couple of months. They all live on the north side of the street. All cars parked in front of the south side along the north side of the street.
And that gentleman is, I spoke with him, he is, he would prefer that this be, that we get rid of the no parking so we can park all his cars on his side as well, on either side of the.
Typically, typically when we mow, we have to see if Ellis Paul gone now, I heard out there mow, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, he's. Helping to have one or more of his person out of there.
Can you go over and ask him to move his vehicles?
Usually green are there.
We have concerns from either engineering or public safety regarding the width. If cars are parked on both sides and traffic trying to get through, my concern would be a fire engine if there was cars parked on both sides and the fire truck tried to get through.
Same width all the way through from First to Fifth, I believe.
Yeah, both sides parking.
I thought it was one side.
Three blocks, that's, you know, it's set apart because of S14.
Actually, we can send there being more of the turning radius at the corner.
And I believe there's a painted curb to kind of keep cars from parking too close to S14.
Fine, K Avenue, once you get to Fifth, doesn't, it's in front, it doesn't go through. And so, it isn't like somebody's gonna be using that as a thoroughfare like N. Or I.
Jim, do you have any comments from your perspective?
No reason to do it, they do so. I don't want to be interested, so they didn't get on S14. A lot of stuff on S14. I do know, you know, the D O T does studies, they put out recommendations.
So, that came from a DOT recommendation? For that spot?
Yes. That, if this issue first, first came up, I contacted the DOT. Yes, and they recommend. Yeah, we don't know. Personally, I would say.
You know why they would want it on J and K but not N and M? All residential with the same type of tra, I mean, N would have a lot more traffic with the amount of houses.
Well, I only asked about those.
West M does, yeah, there's not a lot there.
And N is wider.
Sorry.
Both sides of.
Yeah.
And Avenue wider. And. And, 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 yeah, and as in Nancy, yeah. Yeah, and so that, if there was parking, there's still two full lanes to come off of S14 on. It's really a thoroughfare.
I know. But it does, they don't get first responders there. And then, I say, I have the last radio.
That could be relieved with temporary no parking in certain areas though, correct?
Right. It's any more narrow than my street? Eighteenth Street? Can't imagine it is, we don't have any. No parking on one side or the other.
Yeah, I have a question.
You can ask a question.
So, are you saying that if you. Well, S14, the traffic should be allowed to go down there, and you think they turn in J to?
If there was parking on both sides of J, especially if you're on the S14.
Which I'm sure could happen, but if, I've been driving up and down there quite a bit and it's pretty rare to have cars on both sides of the road on any of those lengths of. J or K, but it's entirely possible it could happen.
Right, that's more, that's, that was kind of.
That bounced around in the back of my mind, I could, like you said, in a few years, that's gonna be. A good point.
All right, guys.
Oh.
Yeah, that was a separate question that came up when I was talking to some neighbors.
I don't know if Erin can hear all the discussion from staff in the back, and she's online, Erin, do you have any feedback Johnny brought up? If there, if it would potentially make it more susceptible to a legal challenge if it's different than a DOT recommendation?
Uh, this is Erin, um, I mean, you always want to defer to the expertise, but I don't know if they've done, I haven't heard that they did like a formal traffic study on that stretch or not.
So, is that the appropriate follow-up that we need to? Make the motion for? For DOT, there was a little ask staff background on how it got to be what it is? And if we can change it?
Well, you can certainly change, I think, I think it would be helpful to know when and if a traffic study was ever done on that. Because it's, I mean, that's gonna be ever changing, so the landscape is certainly different now than it was even a couple of years ago.
And I think one option could be to flush out a collection form with all the background material. Otherwise, you could direct Erin to craft, since it's an ordinance, you have to craft something that then you'd have to do three readings of, so.
And a compromised solution is no parking at some point, which actually already exists on Second Street as you're coming up to Lincoln, just a block away from these intersections. So, you could do that, you know, 100 feet, 150 feet, whatever you want to do as well to make sure the intersection still has the clearance, but it would still open up parking if you did at least half a block, that would still open up parking by 50%. That would assume would clear of any legal issues. I'm not a lawyer.
I, I mean, I think that's certainly a compromise approach that you can take if you'd like to do something without getting the background on the, on the intersection.
Hey. It sounds like options would be in action for multiple options you can choose from, if you want to settle on a course tonight, you can direct an ordinance to be drafted to bring back next time. Or you can do nothing. You have three choices, basically.
What's involved in asking for the traffic study?
Uh, I can send an email to, to Tony Gustafson, see if they'd be willing to provide a traffic study or if they have numbers. But I believe if it's within the city limits and maybe Erin would have more knowledge on this, I believe it's the city limits and the city would have to pay for the funding for that, and that's expensive, so I would advise not doing that.
That's my understanding as well, and, and just to be clear, I'm not advising that you have a traffic study done. The question was if there had been one done, what was the recommendation and whether there was liability associated with that? So, I, I agree, Jordan, I don't think, I don't think it's necessarily a case where you go out and, and have a study completed.
So, based on those, turning traffic, that was the DOT's.
That was their recommendation.
It was a little bit turning traffic. So, if we just put no parking here to corner, I think that pretty much alleviates that issue.
Yes.
Are you making that the ordinance? We would.
No, if, if we're gonna look at an ordinance, we just need direction tonight, we don't actually need a motion, but we would need consensus on a direction.
I would be in favor of. What Jason just said.
Yeah.
150 feet, or 155 feet is what's used on the intersection by Lincoln, I don't know if that's a standard for here to corner, if it varies from situation to situation, but.
And they can always work with the staff too to.
Well, and yeah, topography there would probably be smart too.
Yeah.
150 feet.
As long as it's not in somebody's driveway.
That would be bad, huh? Okay, and then that too, might be good just to have staff evaluate the 150, make sure it makes sense out there.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll get consensus to look at an ordinance of changing it to no parking roughly 150 feet-ish from corner, with staff review to be looked at for an ordinance next time. Okay. Get lots of heads nodding, so we will consider that item accomplished, which moves us to new business B.
Thank you.
Which is approved, and thank you for bringing it up.
Yes.
New business B approved purchase of a new phone system for all departments. You have a proposal in front of you, I believe a new quote as well was emailed, so that's what we are looking at.
Move approved. One. Uh, recommendation number one. Sorry.
Be amended, be amended.
Yeah, we amended for you, amended for me and some change.
The one that was emailed.
Yes.
So, Jason and Luke for the motion to approve the most amended of dead American business phones. Any discussion? Are we voting on the buttons or voice? Okay. Okay, seeing no discussion, council, please vote.
You know, it hurts a little, I like that it's a. Own firm savings.
Yeah, I think we figured after about three and a half to four years, we'll actually be, that's where we'll start seeing the cost savings. So, overall, I think it's a really good, good step for the city and you really need different phones, they're archaic. There's still landline too, which is. Pretty cool.
Okay, and that is approved, takes us to C Resolution Number Four, 2021, 2022, Resolution Number, improving a few appendix of the C code, move to approve.
Second.
And move discussion?
Jordan, thanks for kind of helping get the ball rolling on this, I know the J C's. Were, uh, were excited to see this happen. Yeah.
Couple of police officers I talked to were as well.
Yeah, I'd have to say thanks to Rick, because Rick and I were the ones that discussed it and kind of came up with the conclusion. I think it's a good thing for people to see our officers at these events and not other towns, so. But, you know, if they're trying to make money with these events or to do community things, and so I think if they're able to actually accomplish that goal, that's a plus.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, takes us into report, starting with the city administrator.
I have nothing to add other than my report, I'm open for any questions you may have, though. Thank you for, Jordan.
Any updates, I know John Hall's resigned, and that's a really big deal for us too, so.
Yeah. Yep, Michelle and I did a little with Dan Colhannon, and we believe Brenda Dyer will be the interim, so that's, that's great, she knows the city well and she has good ties to the city, so. She's gonna do, work out great for, for us. I meet with the group that purchased the property, the 52 acres, I'm with them, I believe it is Thursday at 1:30, so we'll be talking with them on follow-up for that, so. Everything is moving along, they do not have any leads currently for John, but he, his last day is Friday this week, so he will be starting in Marshalltown next week, he's not really taking a break at all, so.
And I will say too, I talked to Dan a little bit when we were in the situation before, when Levon retired, I feel a lot better about where we are now, just continuity-wise, because we have AEDC at the table, Brenda's already been filling in for John when he was on paternity leave and, or on vacations and things like that. Plus, she's been doing the business retention visits already all through the community. And our city administrator won't have to step in and pick up all that slack like had been done before in the interim, so Jordan's thankful for that. I did a lot of economic development work last time as that, when there was that gap, so I think it'll be as smooth as it can be.
Yeah, yeah, Dan and AEDC definitely reassured us that we'll be covered until they find a replacement, so.
Very good.
Obviously, losing John is a bummer because he's been doing a great job and we thank him for all the work he's done for the community. And when you have somebody that that has that much of a work ethic and track record and does a nice job, you know, at some point they're going to get good opportunities. So you want your people to be in a situation that they have to move on to something else. Unless it's your city administrator, don't go anywhere.
So don't accomplish anything.
Any opportunities to bid him well? Is there gonna be?
He does have an exit interview. I would say that is Thursday at farm grounds, but I don't know if there's going to be anything other than that. I can check and possibly send something out to you. It would be nice to have something for him.
Just have an opportunity to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And speaking of that too, he is on a historic preservation commission. So it's going to open up a vacancy there. So if you have any folks you would like to see fill that, let me know. Looking for somebody good to do that as well. Anything else for Jordan? And then from my report, just a few things. A few weeks ago, Revio had an open house. Unfortunately, I know you all didn't get them on, but there was a good turnout from members of the public that I hadn't seen in any events before. So and they did a good job. I learned some things too that I didn't even know, such as it's humans because it's not made from chickpeas. So I'm always going to remember that, that it's pronounced differently. But yeah, it was, if you have any folks that are wondering what they're doing, it helped more even better understanding, even though I've been tied in. So we can, I'm sure get them to come present to you. I think would probably be helpful to do an amended version of that now that the annexation is complete and they're going to move forward. So.
I'd like to.
So maybe we'll put that on Jordan's list for each out and have Revio give you an amended version of their development plans so that you're in loop.
Even after a meeting because it would not require any action.
Yeah. And then I've been trying to look through too on my, I remember when I prepared my report to look two weeks ahead. So that's something too with Jordan, when he does your emails, to look two weeks ahead too, to make sure there's nothing that we know about that you guys haven't been on the list for. So otherwise Debbie Durham is coming tomorrow for a Main Street visit. So she'll be in town for that. Which says a lot about what we're doing downtown that she's going to come visit. And then otherwise, yeah, the field house is still moving on with fundraising with a meeting this Wednesday to talk about the next phase. So yeah, I'll have any updates after that. Otherwise, Healthy Hometown is still moving along. There's a meeting with that in a couple of weeks and 2040 Vision also has a meeting coming up in August. So all those moving on.
Do we have a new date for that meeting?
I think we're lucky we're using what was already on the schedule for.
Yeah, yeah. 25th, yeah. I did, I did receive, I believe, all but one D O poll today. So I I'll be able to get that set up tomorrow and resign out, get a different one sent out.
Any questions for me? Hey, council reports.
There is a little softball tournament thing going on this weekend. That was very cool. I'll let Tim expand on that, but I was able to announce the batteries, but it was finally getting it. It was really neat to see all the different people from all over the place. It was hot. So we did the very quick version of the start of the game, which consisted of no national anthem, no lineups, just play ball and get it on. It was hot. Doing the abbreviated version, but it was a lot of fun just to go out there and do it. So thanks for letting me do that.
My photos look very nice. Your team always does a fantastic job.
Yeah. That team was on the move. The team was still playing. So so they knocked it out pretty fast. It was nice.
There you go. Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Other, any other council reports? I think how it is, this committee, I guess, is continuing to meet. So registration is open for for entries, parades, events, sponsors, all that good stuff. So folks are looking to get involved. Make sure they go to the website.
Go to the website, collect their forms. If you know vendors or food trucks that want to come. You brought smoked meat. I want to say food.
And. The past slash farmers market type, those type of vendors and then get them signed up.
Door entrance. Working on all some places. We'll see.
Do we have a metronet update? Is that appropriate to ask right now?
I just got an email asking to sign up for their service. It was time to sign up for the service, but other than that, I do not have a really good update for you. Last I knew, and Jeremy probably would have more information on them, but they were supposed to come and talk with Marla. I believe she sent something out on on Facebook last week about it. But I think they have a majority of the alleys done and a good portion of the frontage is done as well. But I'll let Jeremy answer that question because I, he has been the one in contact as well as Ryan.
Has anybody been calling in and complaining about the alley?
The last one. Is this the one that you sent me?
No, we got, no, we got, we got taken between seventh and eighth, the alley between seventh and eighth and J and K. They were going to put a pole smack in the middle between two garages and to make it impossible for three different alley access people not to be able to move their cars. And somebody was quick in the neighborhood and told me about it after the fact and they moved, they moved it someplace else. But had somebody not been paying attention, there would have been three households not able to navigate in and out of their own drive, in and out of their projects.
I thought there was a complaint last week pertaining to the wire. It was over someone's private property and basically what they had to do was get a two foot arm to push it out. So it wasn't on the private property, but I haven't heard any complaints for the alleyways for a couple of weeks. And the last complaint I heard was up on, it was between Q and R Street on Seventh and Eighth, ironically, but it was R and Q.
Anything ironic about that? I think that crew was just like not opening their eyes and looking around.
Would be a good way of putting it, yeah.
Yeah, because it just, I mean, it was, it was so, like I said, somebody was actually home. If had none of those three households been home, you know, because it's during the day, they would have come home and the one in our alley, closest to my own property has not been strung to anything. It's been there for two months and that's between eighth and ninth. So, because there's other places south on it between eighth and ninth that is done, but we just have wire laying on the ground at this point.
Yeah. And you still have.
Yeah, they must be.
Neither have it at all.
I know so many crew, are there so many crews that, I mean, they have several, several crews working in town simultaneously, I assume.
Some above ground and some underground.
Right. And are they allowed to do the whole process or is there yet another set of contractors coming in to do the next part? That's part of what.
They might have different people that actually run it to homes. Yes.
It's more understandable.
Pole to pole.
Yeah, it's more.
Wire sitting, I don't know if it's, there's nothing else on the pole but this one wire and that's laying on the ground like it's going to another pole or somewhere. I mean, I don't know where it's, how it's connected to anything.
So it's my understanding that there's a wire that actually does all of the groundwork and then there's a crew that actually hooks all the wiring up. Last week, in complain, I had a wiring crew. So I went out and talked to them about it. Sounds like that's part of the issue with. Yeah.
But like I said, that it's been, because the last time I brought up the pole in our yard, you said you hadn't approved the alley access stuff yet.
No.
And so that's when I started to become a little sensitive.
Anything else about that subject?
I'm hoping.
And we got behind all those other cities because of the line pole issue. We were ahead of them all and that delayed it.
They work in those, using a line poles at all?
Some. It was about 20% of the total pole inventory was
Feels like.
Able to be used.
We should be going underground with everything at this point. And now we have more poles.
Yeah, I agree with that. I do think that we need to push for underground and I think that is one of the reasons why they're hesitant. Was because they wanted to do above because the cost was so much greater for underground, but I don't think they really have an option on a majority of our area.
Yeah, they're borrowing a lot more than they anticipated having to do. So I'm sure our build out broke their projections a little bit because they have to borrow a lot more. But that also slowed it down too, because they wanted to add a lot more poles to front yards and Jordan nixed that and made them go back and figure out how to do it without putting new poles up in places where there are no poles at all.
Right. Well, there's no poles in our alley. There's some, there's some electric, there's some line poles.
Yeah. So they were following some places where their previous poles, but not putting new poles where there are zero poles. And their council reports. And we'll go to staff. We'll go over to Jeremy.
I've got the things to add from from last council meeting. We're starting to paint, building striping in town. The crosswalk center line, turning lanes, and we are interviewing tomorrow for the winter time. Been answering any questions?
Got a lot of good candidates?
Five, right?
Four.
Mark sent out a doodle today to see when we're available to interview for the wastewater. Awesome.
Thanks, Mitch.
U A team, Class A Northern Nationals softball tournaments last weekend. Started last week, went really well. If I start to name all the people it helped, I'll miss somebody. But we had tremendous support from the city staff, volunteers in the community, USA softball, just so many people involved to really help it, you know, go well. So you know, kudos to to everybody that put in time. Jason is exactly right. It was hot out there, but made for a good, a good three days of play. We had 42 games out there. We had teams from seven different states. We had Iowa, Wisconsin, Minnesota, North Dakota, Missouri, Illinois, Nebraska. So some people came a long way to to play and a lot of them stayed in in Ames. I think Ames did really well too with Iowa games and a lot of stuff going on, Story County Fair. So Nevada was busy for sure last week. So some other things going on. The little shelter at the Wilson Pond that was damaged by the derecho, Nicholas Frieders has rebuilt that as part of an Eagle Scout project. So he started on Saturday morning and I went out there today and it is virtually done. So some cleanup work to do there. So he did a really nice job with that. And glad we could partner with him on that. Have another individual, Ryan Westles, who is wanting to do an Eagle Scout project and kind of expand on that and do some fish stocking in the pond and some structure and things out there, maybe some sort of a fishing jetty or pier. So he's been in contact with the D N R and he's putting his proposal together and he'll be sharing us, sharing that with us in the coming, coming weeks. So good to have those partnerships with those young individuals in our community. They do a really good job. So it's fun to do that. If you've been by there Sunday field, you've probably seen On Track down there starting their work. So we're getting that cleaned up. Always looks a little rougher until it all gets done. So it, you know, they've been working weekends with his other crews up here during the week. So hopefully we'll have that wrapped up here by the middle part of August. By the time youth soccer starts, we'll get that area cleaned up and we're gonna, you know, keep it all fenced in and we'll treat it just like any of our other athletic fields when it's all said and done. So it'll just be a little more multi-use space that we have. So working on that, we've got two memorial benches. People in the community have bought benches for memorials. We'll be putting those up in the community in the coming weeks. We'll start to lose some of our summer help here in the next couple of weeks as we get into August, as they go off to college and do their thing. So we'll kind of transition a little bit with that. And working with Howard Green on some concepts for replacement of the Hattery Shelter. And I think we'll probably have some discussions later this week or next week on some of that. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Correct.
I want to let Tim know. I talked to some people. Last week I went out to the softball games and watched them for a little bit and I talked to a gal from Kansas and and a guy from Missouri and they were very impressed with Score Park, the way it's laid out. The woman from Kansas is probably one of the best facilities that she has, she's a scene and she does a lot of traveling. So just wanted to share that with you. It was hot out there. But they were shade, so I found that that was just fine. So we'll start hiring process again next week. Chris Brandis will be running that. Josh's media was running before, but it'll be Chris's turn now. So we'll see if he has any more success. So until I go, just got questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Karen.
I'll be gone to Clerks Academy Wednesday, Thursday and Friday this week. We just got notice again for, from the county, Story County Auditor, that we will be designated, city clerks will be designated for the filing papers, will be the filing officer. So we'll have papers here for the election. Election period is August 23rd through September 16th. That's when papers can be brought. Karen, the report and getting ready for beginning year transfers, you approved the last year's transfers and council budget committee after August 9th meeting. And do it tonight, but we reschedule. All I have. You have any question?
Anything for Karen? Larry.
You have my report on all the projects that are going on in Nevada. And that's all I have to report if you have any questions.
Thanks, Larry.
The only thing I might add on the, on the downtown project, I mentioned that the water services are being put in this week on Lincoln Highway. It could be complete this week. On track is going to be moving out for a couple of weeks, but honestly to let construct catch up as soon as they're done with all their underground work, construct to be start doing the excavation and for the foundation pavement and they get the pavement in. And the underground work will continue in about two weeks later after they move out on on the rest of Sixth Street. They, that should actually go pretty quick. So we're closing in on the end here and it all looks extremely good. So very, very happy.
Anything for Larry?
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you for allowing me to participate via Zoom.
No problem. We're glad it's a good tool and it's working well.
It is. Thank you.
Hey, anything else before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
And Jason, all those in favor, please say aye. Any post, please say nay. Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.